Good morning. Good morning, and welcome to the New York City Hybrid hearing in the Committee on Parks and Recreation. Please silent all electronic device. At no time, please do not approach the deus. If you have any questions, please raise your hand, and one of us, a Sergeant of Arms, will kindly assist you. Chair, be ready to begin.
Good morning, thank you Sergeant. Good morning, everyone. I am Shaker Krishnan, Chair of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, and I'd like to welcome all of you to this hearing on community gardening and urban agriculture. And I'd like to thank our leadership from the Parks Department that's here too, that does the great work every day stewarding our Green Thumb program, making sure our community gardens have the resources they need. Thank you for your work and thank you for your testimony today too. When it comes to recognizing how vital parks and open space are the life of our city, community gardens are often not given the spotlight they rightfully deserve. Community gardens help provide needed green space in areas that were once lacking, provide educational opportunities for our children, and produce numerous kinds of food products through urban agricultural practices, to name just a few of their many benefits. It is no exaggeration to say that since the community gardening movement took off in the 1970s, gardens have not simply added attractive features to formerly neglected and vacant areas of the city, but have in fact saved many communities from perpetual decline by reinvigorating community involvement and activism through the revitalization and much-needed creation of open space. Having visited community gardens myself across the city and the events put on by many of our community garden groups and advocates, it always deeply moves and impresses me to see the number of volunteers who come out every day, every weekend, to care for the gardens, making sure that it gets the resources that these gardens desperately need. And even through waves of budget cuts and declines in park spending, our community gardeners are there every single day, stepping up where government has not, making sure that the community gardens are an oasis for neighborhoods that need that kind of green space, creating agriculture where it wouldn't exist otherwise, providing space to restore yourself, your mental health, your well-being, that wouldn't exist otherwise. So I salute every community gardener that's here across the city that's doing the work. Know that you have the eternal gratitude of us here in the New York City Council, and I know in the Parks Department as well. Currently, there are approximately 550 gardens located throughout the five boroughs and licensed by Green Thumb. Though they have the technical support from the city, many gardens often find themselves in less than stable situations as threats from development, inconsistent public funding, and various regulatory burdens that local gardening groups are ill-equipped to handle often arise. The most recent cuts to Green Thumb proposed by the Adams administration does not help to lessen the fears that gardeners often cite when trying to ensure the viability of the gardens they support. The Green Thumb program is vital for our Parks Department, for all community gardens across the city, and it is simply unacceptable that every year we at the City Council have to fight to reverse this administration's cuts to the Green Thumb program. That every year we start from a position, a very precarious position, of not knowing whether there'll be funding for Green Thumb, and we in the council have to fight to make sure that funding continues. These funding streams are not temporary. Well, they are in fact temporary, but they should not be so. Because our community gardens are year-round projects, providing much-needed sustainability and sustenance to communities that don't, would not have those spaces otherwise. Programs like that deserve stable, consistent funding from this administration and from city government generally to match the level of investment that the community gardens themselves provide to neighborhoods. It's clear to me that the city needs to emphatically support gardens beyond just the lip service that we often hear and commit to fostering a stable environment and fiscal situation where consistent resources are provided to let these gardens thrive. But no, from our end, this New York City Council, with Speaker Adams's leadership, is committed to fighting each and every year to make sure that our community gardens, our Green Thumb program, has the support that it desperately needs. We need that same commitment from Mayor Adams and this administration. It is just that simple. Urban agriculture is one of the main reasons why resources dedicated to community gardens need to be sufficient and consistent. Many New Yorkers continue to experience food insecurity with inequitable access to healthy, fresh food options, particularly in low-income communities and communities of color that continue to be underserved by full-service grocery stores. Urban agriculture serves to mitigate these inequities as open spaces that engage in urban farming are able to provide fresh food for the community, serve as centers for schoolchildren to learn about nature, food production, and be safe spaces that deliver environmental benefits such as urban heat mitigation and decreasing stormwater runoff. Many activists even argue that the promise of urban agriculture goes beyond just food production and can be a means to address broader social issues such as dismantling oppression, improving political coalition building, fostering greater gender equality, and as I have heard myself from community gardeners, provide spaces to resolve conflict and de-escalate violence. But again, for administration that claims to care about healthy food, healthy eating, and healthy lifestyle, one of the most obvious and impactful ways to match that lip service with actual action is to invest in our community gardens and not cut the Green Thumb program every year, leaving it to the council to fight to restore it. The city zoning rules permit agricultural activities in almost all of the city zones, which presents us with the promising hope that there are no outright rules that should impede the growth of this activity. The council has long recognized the need for urban agricultural support and called for various policy proposals to support their growth. In 2019, the City Council issued the Growing Food Equity Plan, which in part called for creating a centralized office focused on facilitating the growth of urban agriculture, increasing support for educational programming for farming at gardens, and determining what vacant plots of land are suitable for agriculture and gardening. Various bills were also enacted by the council, including Local Law 123 of 2021, which established the Mayor's Office of Urban Agriculture, and an Urban Agriculture Advisory Board, and Local Law 121 of 2021, which mandates the office prepare an urban agriculture report every five years. As required, the office released its first report in October 2023, which detailed the office's plans to expand city residents' awareness and access to urban agriculture throughout the city, with the focus on how agriculture can be used to improve local food production and distribution, cultivate economic development, and how the city can better measure data regarding the impact of urban agriculture. I'd like to use this hearing to see how we, as a city, can increase support for urban farming in community gardens and make it less burdensome on gardeners so they can make the best use of the gardens and farms they operate, oftentimes on a volunteer basis. I think we can all agree that there are ways for the city to make this growing practice more welcoming for those who seek to operate a gardener farm in a safe and reasonable way. I'd also like to mention that, separate from community gardens, this committee will also consider a bill, Intro 642, sponsored by my colleague Kevin Riley. This bill would formally rename Williams Bridge Square, a park located in his district in the Bronx, to Marcus Garvey Square. I look, I thank him for introducing the bill and look forward to hearing any testimony related to it. Today, we will also be considering a street naming bill, an omnibus bill, from council members across the council who have submitted proposals and bills for street namings in their district, including my own. I'd like to welcome the administration and the advocates who have come today to testify. I'd like to thank Councilmember Carr for joining us for today's hearing, and now I turn it over to our committee counsel, Chris Artori, to swear on the witnesses.
Good morning. Would members of the administration please raise your right hand if you're able? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say we've been joined today on behalf of the Parks Department by Karina Smith, Assistant Commissioner for Community Outreach and Partnership for the Parks Department, Carlos Martinez, Chief of Green Thumb from the Mayor's Office of Urban Agriculture, and a proud Jackson Heights resident and constituent too, and Evan Burr, Deputy Director for the Mayor's Office of Urban Agriculture, and of course, Matt Drury, Chief Citywide Legislative Affairs Director for our Parks Department. Thank you all for joining in for your work. You now start with your testimony.
Good morning, Chair Krishnan and Parks Committee members. My name is Karina Smith, and I serve as Assistant Commissioner for Community Outreach and Partnership Development for New York City Parks. Our division oversees many of the teams-
Assistant Commissioner, sorry. Do you mind bringing your mic a little bit closer?
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. Our division oversees many of the teams within our agency that specifically focuses on external engagement and an interaction with New Yorkers, all with the shared goal of improving and sustaining our park system. For example, our division oversees, or is overseeing, the agency's Let's Green NYC initiative, which encourages New Yorkers to get out into their green spaces and help beautify them through volunteer service projects. Last month, we were thrilled to announce that we officially surpassed our previous record with over 500,000 people participating as volunteers since the initiative began in 2023. Joining me on today's panel are representatives from two of Community Outreach and Partnership Development's teams: Matt Drury, our Chief of Citywide Legislative Affairs, and to my left, Carlos Martinez, our Chief of New York City Parks Green Thumb, and we're pleased to be here to testify at today's hearing. When Green Thumb was created in 1978, at a time when New York City was in the midst of significant financial crisis and social upheaval, it was able to assist neighborhoods in revitalizing local spaces and creating new and important community resources. Today, after 45 years since its inception, Green Thumb has become the largest urban community gardening program in the nation, with more than 550 community gardens across the five boroughs and an ever-growing network of more than 20,000 volunteer gardeners in its membership and its own operations and administrative teams. Green Thumb functions as a mini park system inside of NYC Parks, providing vital green oases to relax, to connect with nature, and create social connections. Its original mission continues today by providing free programming and material support for its 550-plus community gardens in the city, including educational programs and workshops that cover topics on urban agriculture as well as group development. Community gardens are stewarded by dedicated volunteers, many of whom are longstanding members of their garden and their community, demonstrating the strength of community bonds and what can be achieved when local government works in close partnership with New Yorkers. To help provide a more detailed background information about our Green Thumb program and various efforts we undertake alongside our community garden partner groups to maximize those potential, the potential of these truly special gardens throughout the city, I'll now introduce Chief of NYC Parks Green Thumb, Carlos Martinez.
Good morning, Chair Krishnan and Parks Committee members. Thank you, Assistant Commissioner Smith, for your remarks. I am Carlos Martinez, and I serve as Chief of Green Thumb at NYC Parks. We are very pleased to be here today to discuss Green Thumb community gardens as well as the efforts we have undertaken at Green Thumb to support community gardening and urban agriculture in New York City. Given that several new members have joined both the council and the Parks Committee in the last few years, please allow me to quickly provide more information about our community gardening model and our support of urban agriculture initiatives. As Assistant Commissioner Smith mentioned, Green Thumb is the community gardening program of NYC Parks, with a mission of supporting land stewards who care for community gardens and urban farms across the five boroughs while preserving 100 acres of combined open space. Green Thumb was founded in 1978 to support the community gardening movement that had arisen during a time of disinvestment and abandonment of public and private property. Today, we sustain a growing network of over 550 community gardens and tens of thousands of volunteers, community gardeners, throughout all five boroughs. Green Thumb assists neighborhood volunteers by facilitating free access to public land and providing materials, technical assistance, operational support, public programming, and community engagement. We also serve thousands of New Yorkers who are interested in community-led environmental stewardship through our public programming, as well as hundreds of thousands of annual visitors to Green Thumb gardens who enjoy these cherished public open spaces. Green Thumb community gardens are unique public spaces that are stewarded by volunteer New Yorkers, which help catalyze sustainable, resilient, healthy, and equitable communities across the city. Gardens thrive through a longstanding partnership between New York City government, community gardeners, and countless partners who collectively care for these spaces in a shared spirit of service. Green Thumb community gardens reflect the history and diversity of New York City's neighborhoods and serve as platforms for neighborhood verification, social cohesion, teaching and learning, cultural and artistic expression, food production, health and wellness, environmental justice, sustainability, resilience, and more. Reflecting the unique personalities and needs of our city's neighborhoods, Green Thumb gardens range widely in size and nature and host a variety of activities from botanical horticulture and fruit gardening to passive recreation, special performances and programming, providing opportunities for all New Yorkers to participate and collectively engage with their fellow neighbors. It is important to note that each garden group determines the use of these places. Our core philosophy is that the local community volunteers that make up the garden groups best understand the needs and hopes of their community. Within this context, we best add, we best add value by helping these groups realize their unique vision for each garden. That means that whether gardeners plant ornamental gardens, food gardens, or both, we support them in that undertaking. Thanks to the increased support from city government in recent years, including City Council discretionary capital and expense allocation such as the Parks Equity Initiative and greener NYC funding, Green Thumb has experienced tremendous growth and expanded the ability to support gardens in addressing decades-long disinvestment. Specifically, this has allowed us to provide new and higher-quality materials, to increase the number of annual workshops, to develop new specialized trainings for gardeners, and to work with emerging garden groups to initiate over 25 new community gardens since 2016. In addition, Green Thumb is rebuilding, expanding, and sustaining 50 gardens in 50 public housing developments through an innovative partnership with the New York City Housing Authority. With additional funding and seasonal staff provided by council discretionary funding since fiscal year 2020, we have been able to make unprecedented levels of investment in gardens and expand the ways we serve local gardeners. This includes addressing overdue infrastructure improvements, including the installation of new fencing, sidewalks, accessible pathways, and garden structures, new workshops, and specialized trainings for gardeners, and expanded provision of materials and plant supplies, as well as expanded operational support through the addition of new seasonal staff. NYC Parks Green Thumb has supported urban agriculture since its founding, providing tools, equipment, training, and materials that support food production in gardens. Food production has been deeply rooted in community gardening since gardens began sprouting across the city, and this has been a growing trend in recent years. Green Thumb has adjusted its programming and support accordingly to remain responsive to the needs of our network. We have developed new workshops and trainings on growing food, permitted garden groups to sell their own produce to support onsite efforts, and formed new partnerships to provide additional supplementary support for food-producing gardens. Today, more than 80% of gardens on NYC Parks property grow food in some way, and we estimate that a significant amount of food is grown in community gardens each season, typically for household consumption or local distribution. Some gardens are able to distribute food to their community to supplement healthy food access through farm stands, community-supported agriculture, and food box programs in partnership with regional farms. In 2022, Green Thumb secured more than $46 million in federal funding from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Plan, to provide critical onsite water supply infrastructure that will ease access for irrigation and maintenance to over 260 food-producing community gardens under jurisdiction of NYC Parks. This represents the largest capital investment in the history of the Green Thumb program, which will allow thousands of volunteers, volunteer land stewards, involved in urban agriculture across the city to grow more healthy and fresh food while providing vibrant green spaces for all New Yorkers. In closing, we want to thank City Council for the opportunity to testify at this hearing, to shine a spotlight on the tireless work of the volunteers that steward community gardens across New York City, and to showcase the work that we have been doing to support them. You will now be hearing from our colleagues at the New York City Mayor's Office of Urban Agriculture, after which we will be happy to answer any question that you may have. I will now introduce Evan Burr, Deputy Director of the Office of Urban Agriculture.
Thank you, Director. Good morning, Chair Krishnan. Excuse me. Good morning, Chair Krishnan and members of the Committee on Parks and Recreation. My name is Evan Burr. I am the Deputy Director of the Office of Urban Agriculture. Director Mickey sends her apologies. She woke up today with a nasty stomach bug, so she was not able to be in. But anyhow, we are very happy to be here to testify at this hearing on the important topics of community gardens and support for urban agriculture. As the chair pointed out, we were established by LL 123 of 2021. Mayor's Office of Urban Agriculture, or the MOA, as we like to refer to it, is a newer office. We're tasked with leading New York City's efforts to increase access to and production of fresh, healthy, and locally grown food while strengthening climate resiliency and spurring economic activity across our city. Through research, policy development, advocacy, and community outreach, MOA aims to address the climate, health, and food disparities in our natural and built environments. We collaborate with other city agencies to advance agriculture and equity on several fronts, including community gardens, urban farms, food systems, workforce development, environmental justice, and building a green, resilient economy. NYC has a long and rich history of urban agriculture and land stewardship, dates back to the Lenape, the indigenous people of the land that now comprises the five boroughs of our city. Many of the active community gardens across the city arose out of a grassroots movement in which New Yorkers stepped up to reclaim trash-strewn vacant lots and transform them into green spaces for public use and benefit. The majority of these gardens are within the NYC Parks Green Thumb network now. NYC is now home to a breadth of urban agriculture models such as soil-based community gardens, urban farms, and rooftop gardens, as well as non-soil-controlled environment models like aquaponics and hydroponics. Some of these models are built to teach through growing. Others have a focus on food production. Some are places of respite and wellness, and quite a few strive to do all these activities and more. All of these models and sites are critical elements in our city landscape. Infrastructure that extends the season of growing such as greenhouses or multipurpose buildings to provide educational centers and hubs of learning are also a part of urban agriculture in New York City. Some great examples that I'd like to share are exciting new agricultural educational sites taking shape now in our city, including the Farms at NYCHA expansion, the coming greenhouse facility soon to begin construction at NYCHA Marlborough Houses, and the District 22 Learning Farm in Bergen Beach, Brooklyn, now finishing construction and due to open in October of this year. Yet despite this good news, there are many barriers that stakeholders face, and the office strives to address in our efforts to expand urban agriculture in NYC. Constraints on scaled food production and revenue generation, access to land to steward beyond a volunteer capacity, and lack of urban agriculture infrastructure in all boroughs are all formidable hurdles to urban agriculture stakeholders. In our quest to address these barriers, MOA has developed initiatives and achieved success in our first year and a half of operation. We created the Reimagining Farm-to-School in NYC initiative in collaboration with NYC DOE Office of Food and Nutrition Services. We are leveraging New York State and USDA Farm-to-School grant funding to develop and integrate agricultural education in the classroom and on urban and rural farms for approximately 350-plus NYC public school students across the five boroughs. The students learn about the important life cycle of food and what culturally relevant crops are grown throughout the city straight from urban farmers. The pilot also includes the city's first farmer-producer training, which kicks off this fall to support more small- to mid-scale farm businesses primed to apply for school food procurement contracts. It includes funding to refurbish or restore 14 school gardens, and as well as onsite cooking demos at the urban farms. MOA's efforts to foster equitable economic development opportunities in the food and agriculture sector also extend to other initiatives. For over a year, we have collaborated with NYC Small Business Services to provide free MWBE certification workshops to ensure eligible small food farm and other relevant businesses are getting into the pipeline to earn their MWBE certifications. NYC is a city of small businesses. Improving the pathways to city-based procurement as well as building a stronger bridge to critical resources for food, climate, and other related agriculture-based businesses is work that our office has undertaken to help meet the city's MWBE goals and to support emerging businesses. Another innovative approach that the MOA has taken to address the intersecting needs of food production and climate resiliency is the development of a rooftop urban agrivoltaics pilot. Agrivoltaics is the colocation of solar energy and agriculture in a model. We believe a pilot that focuses on the colocation of both solar and food production could be one of the next advancements needed on our rooftops in the city. We're also researching and exploring ways to develop new license agreements for underutilized city-owned land as we recognize that this is a barrier to be addressed and that members on the council, as well as urban farmers, have identified. These new agreements would be focused on enabling revenue-generated urban agriculture activity such as scaled food production or climate resiliency and would allow for-profit generation in the selling of urban agriculture products and services. Our office has also been involved in policy advocacy and legislation, including the community gardens water bill exemption, green roof tax abatement, our growing opportunities in Innovative Farming Act, which was introduced in the US House and US Senate, and informing ongoing discussions around farm bill policy. We have also partnered with NYC Department of City Planning over the last year on info sessions, briefings, and advocacy for the city of Yes for Economic Opportunity, as these new zoning changes will allow a greater breadth of urban agricultural business development, creating exciting new economic opportunities for the food and agriculture sector in New York City. Great news that this passed the City Council two weeks ago. We're very much looking forward to partnering with you in the future on urban agriculture policy and projects in your districts, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Thank you. Now, take questions if you like.
Sure. First of all, thank you so much, each of you, for your testimony, for your work, for your commitment to both the Green Thumb program, community gardens generally, and of course, the state of urban agriculture with the Mayor's Office of Urban Agriculture as well. I know the work you do, and send my best to Kiana. Hope she recovers soon, and thank, please thank-
I'll tell her.
On behalf, yes, for her great work too. And as I've said before, you know, I've seen you all in your work and events that Green Thumb has done, that I participated in, and know well your commitment to this effort and to improve the support for community gardens and urban agriculture in our city. So, thank you all. And I also want to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Ang virtually. I'll ask a few questions, then turn over to my colleagues in case they have any questions. My first one was just, has, just to set the, you know, stage a bit too, has the administration and the Parks Department or Green Thumb in particular done any analysis of what neighborhoods are most in need of new urban agricultural sites or community gardens?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, I have to speak up a little bit. Has the administration or, you know, the Green Thumb program done any analysis of what neighborhoods are most in need of urban agriculture or community garden sites?
Yeah, we haven't engaged in any formal analysis as far as the citywide situation goes, but we plan to embark on that, starting, starting that research actually in the fall. We utilize existing urban ag data, which is helpful but not comprehensive, from sources such as community-based research like farming concrete and city resources in NYC Open Data for neighborhoods across the city where there's both great need and vast potential for urban agriculture development. We understand that Green Thumb has conducted some of this analysis, so I defer to my friend, Director Martinez, here on that one.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. At Green Thumb, we have done analysis of the areas served by community gardens, also the areas that lack community gardens where residents are unable to reach these spaces within walking distance. We're happy to share that information.
Sure, it would be helpful to see it too, absolutely. Similarly, do we have data on the total number, average amount of food that is harvested each year by urban farms and community gardens?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. That task is almost impossible. At these spaces, we know and we value the amount of food that is grown in these spaces, but to measure or to give you an exact number is very- but to measure or to give you an exact number is very difficult. It's based on our store by volunteers. We estimate that they grow approximately six hundred tons of food, but again, these are very rough estimates.
It might be helpful for Green Thumb or the Parks Department generally to find ways to, you know, quantify this information a bit more, because I do think there's so much food production that's great for our neighborhoods happening at our community gardens, and to have a better sense of what that looks like, whether it's through surveys or outreach to the community gardeners themselves, and kind of at a local level, what they project is the amount of food they're growing. But it could, it would be helpful to have that information and data, especially, you know, as urban farming and agriculture becomes more and more an important part of our climate work overall. So hopefully, we can try to track that more carefully or in more detail going forward.
Thanks for that, Councilmember. Just want to, also, that we visit every year. The community engagement team at Green Thumb, we visit the gardens under park jurisdiction, and we collate some data. We're happy to explore that idea and work with the Mayor's Office of Urban Ag how to be more targeted, more specific.
That's great. And what portion of the parks budget, Green Thumb or otherwise, is devoted to promoting or supporting urban ag programs in community gardens?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. So, we don't discriminate in our budget. We don't have... Our support to gardeners is with tools, materials, and technical assistance. We don't dedicate a specific item or budget item to urban agriculture specifically, but we provide them with the specific tools. Like, that go from lumber, soil, compost, landscape fabric, even like with seeds, native plants, seedlings. And in addition to that, we provide the training for them how to grow or escalate food production. So, year to year, this type of allocations vary depending on the needs. But we don't have a specific number dedicated for urban agriculture. It's because the spaces are very different.
Right.
Some spaces are for botanical purposes, and they also need soil. All our gardens are dedicated exclusively to food production, and they also need soil. So we don't discriminate the type of, like, the budget items in our budget, but...
Got it. I'm taking a step back. I mentioned before in my opening statement, too, the Green Thumb funding that we include every year as part of the budget negotiations. It's, as I've said, it's unfortunately a, what we call in budget language, a one-shot funding, where every year we have to fight to get it renewed. How important is that funding for the Green Thumb Program? What does it fund, and how necessary is it for your operation as a Green Thumb Program?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. So the one-shot funding that we receive every year since fiscal year 20 has helped us, like, provide additional support to our gardeners, and that is like more quality materials, more resources, expand food production, provide more technical assistance, more trainings. In addition to that, it helped us provide fifteen seasonal lines, which is, help us provide more support, dedicated support to our gardeners.
And those are the seasonal workers that every year are depending on this funding for the continuation of their positions, correct?
Correct. They are attached to that specific one-shot funding.
And would you say that the need for the technical assistance, for the support from seasonal workers for the community gardens has increased or decreased since this funding line started in 2020?
This funding help us to match the needs of our gardeners. Since the pandemic, there is a growing interest about food production, and we're dedicating more effort towards that aspect of the community gardens. So yes, we're seeing, and it also coincides with, like, the fiscal year 20, when we start receiving this additional funding. So it responds to the, also, need of the gardeners to grow more food, and we're supporting them through this funding, yes.
If the proposed cut to the Green Thumb Program and the FY25 budget takes effect, how would the Parks Department adapt? What would be the responsibilities on community gardening groups? How would the Parks Department make up for this loss of funding?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We'll adapt, as we have done in the past. We will use our resources efficiently and be more strategic about that, but we will need to scale down.
It would require scaling down, right?
Yes, Councilmember.
Let's go back to another question on the budget side. I think you had mentioned in your testimony that the Green Thumb secured forty-six million dollars in federal funding from the IRA. And so I'm just curious more about what that in particular means. I mean, you kind of testified it a bit already, but just in a bit more detail, what does that funding look like? What will it be used for? How will it help with support for community gardens in the long term?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So, some background. Our community garden is access water traditionally through the fire hydrant. That means the gardeners need to use hoses that cross sometimes sidewalks, major intersections, sometimes as far as one hundred feet away from the garden. So having internal onsite infrastructure for water is a game changer. So currently, we have sixty community gardens in parks property that have that infrastructure. So with this funding, will allow us to provide to have two hundred and sixty community gardens to be, to benefit from this new infrastructure. We're working with USDA and then Natural Resources Conservation Service in this grant. We're currently in the planning phase. And with this specific funding that we secure, the forty-six million, two hundred and sixty gardens are eligible to receive support, but with the current funding with the federal government, we're able to provide internal water to one hundred gardens.
Thank you. You know, I just want to note, too, that it's incredible to see on the federal side the commitment to our trees, to our community gardens with these kinds of investments. And I think New York City needs to get much more serious, much quicker, about really matching where the federal government is when it comes to investing in our green spaces, because to see the disparity between the federal government's support for these kind of efforts and the city government's lack of support for it is very telling in itself. And so in the larger push for one percent of our budget for parks, it is really catching up to where other levels of government are frankly doing much more. And I think that does not reflect well on New York City, and it's something that really needs to change in the near future, but I just wanted to note that. Switching gears a bit, too, you know, what, I've heard from community gardens and gardeners, too, some of the, for lack of a better word, bureaucratic difficulties between, you know, making sure they get the resources from the Parks Department, the licensing agreements, and making sure they have the resources they need. It's a common issue in city government, whether it's community gardens, plazas, or public spaces. The groups on the ground oftentimes have the most difficulty getting the resources because of a lot of complications in the process, that they're not streamlined enough. So what are the biggest concerns that you've heard from community gardens about where they need the most support and resources from parks and, you know, caring for these gardens?
Thank you, Councilmember. So as I mentioned before, we do site visits every year. We visit these gardens with the help of our community engagement team. So we do an assessment of these sites, and we know which gardens need the help right away. So we use equity lens to address their needs, and we address the gardens who are historically disinvested, and that's where we put the resources there. We have communication with these gardeners, and we know their needs, and we put the resources where the needs is more immediate.
And aside from the site visits, too, are there regular communications throughout the year with the gardens or a system for communication to kind of hear as how their concerns evolve over the course of the year?
Yes. We actually started this year State of the Greentown Gardens, where we have basically a town hall type of event, where we invite gardeners to join us in a room and hear from us about our challenges and also like our needs as well. But at the same time, we want to hear from them, like, what are their real needs and how we can work together to prioritize our service.
And in 2019, there were some gardening groups that were hesitant to sign a new license agreement with parks. Did Green Thumb lose any gardening groups as a result of the new agreement? Or how was the process regarding the recent 2023 licensing renewal? How has that process all worked? Was there, had there been any changes in the licensing renewal process from 2019 to 2023? Can you speak to that a bit?
Yes. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So no gardening group had been lost as a result of the new license agreement. I want to clarify, the license agreement is with the gardens under park jurisdiction. So right now, we have three hundred and eighty-eight of those gardens in our jurisdiction, and those gardens sign a license agreement with us. We now started the 2023 licensing agreement. I'm happy to report that all the groups have executed the agreement. We did an extensive outreach to these groups with a lot of education. We did surveys, we did also town halls, and where we explained the details of the license agreement, also in multiple languages. And the license agreement, I'm happy to report that we listened to them, and we made some changes, beneficial changes, changing the term of the license from four to ten years. That was a welcome change as well. Also, there...
And the term of the license is now ten years?
Correct, a full decade.
Got it, okay.
So it's a message that we want to tell the gardeners that these gardens are here to be preserved. In addition to that, we clarify the term about selling agricultural produce. That, just to clarify, that also involves, like, they're allowed to sell compost, for example. So in the 2019 license agreement, allow them to sell their produce with any revenue to be invested into the garden group. Then we clarified that. In addition to that, we increased their ability to host fundraisers from two to four, because we know there are volunteers. They need to raise funds for the care of the space. So we made those updates, and again, all three hundred and eighty-eight gardens are in good standing.
Can you just clarify, because you were saying for the, for composting and also for urban agriculture, so they are allowed to sell composting, and what are the restrictions on the sale of agriculture? Can you just clarify what the policies are around that for community garden?
So, since, selling agricultural produce grown onsite in the garden is allowed by the license agreement. In this 2023 license agreement, we just made the categories more broadly. To allow them to sell eggs, compost, seeds, seedlings, plant material, beyond what is produced from the actual, like, their harvest, for example. So it's more broadly the idea of selling agricultural produce in gardens.
I see. And then my final question before turning over to my colleagues for a bit was just, this is the lawyer side of me, but, you know, I think with the license agreements, whether it's for community gardens, even frankly, separate agency, but plazas and things like that, the terms can be very onerous for community groups in particular. The legalese in there, the requirements for insurance policies, or, you know, indemnification or things like that can really be excessive for groups that have very little in resources, and it really transfers a lot of the legal responsibility from the city agencies where I think it should be, because the city's resources are much greater from a legal standpoint and otherwise. I mean, transfer them to the community groups that don't have the capacity to really carry those obligations. And, you know, it could make gardeners very hesitant to sign on to licenses or otherwise and assume so much legal liability they really shouldn't be assuming in the first place. Has that come up in this context? What efforts in the licensing process have been made by the Parks Department to refine that, to make sure the burden shifting isn't too, isn't great on the community gardens?
Thank you for sharing your concern, Councilmember. We made an extensive educational process during the 2023 relicensing process, where we explain all this, and we made it clear. We even made videos, we hosted town halls in multiple languages, because we understand that our gardens are stored by many folks from different backgrounds, and we clarify all this. So for example, insurance is not required as part of the process. Trying to think about, we'll listen to their concerns. We learned from the process back in 2019, and we tried to make it better, also the license. And also, we created like a Q&amp;A document where all these legalese is now into like plain English. It explains every single detail. We also host workshops and trainings about the license agreement in a way to explain every single section of the agreement, just to make it easier to digest, like, what the things that they're able to do in the space. I have talked to many people in other programs around the country and even around the world, and they are amazed to see that this is a very generous agreement, and our program is going above and beyond to support gardeners. So I'm happy to see that the city is making an intentional effort to support the gardeners.
Got it.
Again, we provide free resources, free access to land, free access to water, tools, materials, training. So I think, and again, trying to match the resource, the efforts that the volunteers provide to this space.
That's good to hear, and I just urge you all to continue to be conscious of those, you know, concerns and how to address it, because, you know, it's one of the biggest but most important considerations when it comes to public space. It's if we want it to remain public and we want communities to participate and residents to be a part of it, we can't hold them to the same standards as private entities that have much more in resources or frankly, city government. You know, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily happening here. I'm just saying that it is a larger, I see it in public space over and over again in our city, where, you know, the burdens put on smaller community groups can be so great, and it's almost like expecting the same things of them as we'd expect of a private entity or a bid or otherwise that has more resources to manage space. And then if we go down that route, we end up in situations where we're actually decreasing the, you know, access to public space and deprioritizing it. And so even if the intentions are good, that's where in the licensing process can get much more complicated. So I just urge you all to continue to be conscious of that, to find ways to ease the burden on community garden or groups in particular as they maintain their spaces. Now I'll turn it over to Councilmember Carr, who I think has some questions.
Thank you, Chair. It's good to see you all. Thanks for being here today. You know, my home borough has eight community gardens, Staten Island, and one of them is in my district. And then if I go to the Brooklyn side of my district and I look at not just the little area that I have, but the entire sort of southwest Brooklyn area, there's none. And that's not surprising, because on both sides of the bridge of my district, the housing typology permits people to garden at home. They have that capacity. And so, you know, my focus here in this conversation is really in NYCHA facilities. So the one community garden I have is at the South Beach Houses, a NYCHA facility, and I have a second NYCHA facility in my district, the Berry Homes, which does not have one. So I guess what I'm interested in hearing from you is how does the partnership with NYCHA work? Is there a preference with working with tenant associations as your local community partner? Or can it just be a resident or a group of residents separate and apart from that? What could be the process and partnership that we can continue to grow between yourselves and NYCHA and as it pertains to the Berry Homes?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Yes, we understand the difference in numbers about community gardens, and we want to support that in Staten Island as well. I'm glad that you are aware of the South Beach Community Garden. We actually were partners with them. This is part of the partnership between NYC Parks Green Thumb and NYCHA. The idea behind this partnership is like to start thinking about being creative and how we can expand our support. South Beach Community Garden is an eligible garden is because it is accessible from the sidewalk. It function as a public space, so we're expanding the definition of public space in collaboration with NYCHA. We're taking a closer look to continue expanding in Staten Island, but I'm happy to work with your office about identifying potential sites as well. I want to be mindful that our model is community-driven. We go where there's a community group ready to take a community garden responsibility. It's a lot of work here behind the scenes. It's a year-round work, but we're always happy to explore initiatives. For example, we have a partnership memorandum of agreement with NYPD. In Hill Street Community Garden is under jurisdiction of NYPD. There's a plan for a future capital project there, but they don't have a use there. So in the interim, we plan a community garden there, and it's been functioning very well since 2016, 17, and we want to continue working with those type of partnerships with other city agencies.
No, I appreciate that, and absolutely you need a willing partner on the ground, right? Who's gonna, who's gonna be working with you. And I think I just wanted to make the point that I think Borough Equity in this case is not trying to get us from eight to a hundred community gardens, but rather, you know, being very targeted and invested in particular places where, again, the housing typology does not permit people to garden at home, so to speak, right? And I think NYCHA facilities, as it pertains to Staten Island, is where we should look. And then in addition to that, as far as urban farming is concerned, you know, is the mission of the office particular to just helping private actors kind of access credits and whatnot at the federal level in order to bring about urban agriculture? We have a green roof in my district. We have a green roof in my district at the teleport, thanks to the Nocotra's efforts. Like, is, is there a look at public spaces, publicly owned spaces, and what role they could play in the urban agriculture field? Because there's a couple of places in Staten Island that I think we could have that conversation about how there could be significant food growth there. And maybe that flows into our pantries, maybe that flows into a marketplace, what have you. I think there's a lot of thought we could put into that. But I'd just love to know, like, what you think the limits are of your mandate.
I'm sorry, council member, what was the question?
The question was about the mandate of MOA, right?
Yeah.
Do you, is your mandate specific to helping private actors set up urban agriculture opportunities? Or are you actively engaged with what city land, public land, public spaces could be used in that mission as well? And do you think there's opportunities for you to get funding streams that are available to private actors through taxes and credits for public spaces as well? Is there, is that something that's in your bandwidth, something that you've had some experience with, thought about? You mentioned that there's a survey, an analysis that's forthcoming later this year. Is public spaces part of that analysis?
Yeah, yeah, it certainly is. That's, it's, this is actually something that we discuss actually all the time. Anywhere from finding, you know, additional funding streams, but also the innovative licensing agreements that I actually referred to in the statement, to where certain city-owned land parcels could be put to use for community benefit. And that would enable a wider range of sort of urban agriculture activities on that land. So, yeah, we talk about this all the time. You know, we'd be happy to circle back with your office, actually with the director. We could have, you know, a much more in-depth conversation about that, for sure.
That'd be great. I'd love to do that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Oops, I'm on this side. Just a few questions. So I'm not a lawyer, so I will be putting on my social worker hat, because I do think that these programs are great just for the well-being of all folks in the community in addition to obviously providing food and other benefits to the community. So just a few questions. So just to clarify the point in the licensing. So if a group, let's just say, came together and said, "We want a community garden in our space", is that something or do they need the licensing? I wasn't sure about that piece.
Thanks for the question, Councilmember Lee. The license, so we had two, I think we can talk about two different categories of gardens. We have the gardens that are under jurisdiction of Parks Department, 388 of those. They sign a license agreement with us. Then we have 175 gardens in different jurisdictions. That would be state or other city agencies. And those gardens register with us to receive support from us. So that's the difference between those two types of gardens.
Okay, awesome. Do you also have a breakdown by borough of where they are? And is it in places where there are food deserts, let's just say, so that perhaps we can do more green growing and naturally build those fresh foods into the neighborhoods?
Thanks for that question, Councilmember. Yes, we have a breakdown by borough. These community gardens, most of them were started when the city was going, back in the 70s, when we have like a lot of this investment. And also matches like when we have food deserts. So, and actually, those gardens are producing food. And we provide that extra support to those gardens, because there's a historic disinvestment of neighborhoods. So we provide targeted support to those.
Okay, awesome. And then, so when I ran my former nonprofit organization, it was a Korean Asian-specific organization. We had two senior centers. And it was like the most interesting case we had to get involved in, because there were seniors that were part of a community garden in Flushing and we had to be mediators and intervene, because there were language barriers. And what was happening is, is that the seniors, and this is, you know, showcases the importance of the community gardens. Like, they, they really took ownership, but they took ownership to like the 100th level, right? So they started growing their foods and then selling them privately and all these things. And then they got into arguments with each other, saying, "No, this is my land, this is not your land." And we had to come in, because there was a language barrier, and explain, "No, this is like, not either of your land. This is like public property," right? But it just speaks and goes to the point that I think especially older adults and seniors in New York City, they thrive on these types of programs. And so I just wanted to know if you had any sort of partnerships with DIFTA, let's just say, to have these Green Thumb-type programs that are more geared towards older adults and seniors? Because I think we saw, especially during COVID and all of that, how it was important for their mental and well-being to just be outside and be productive.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Yes, many of these community gardens are cared by seniors. And we love what they're doing for all these years or even decades. Talking about conflict, that's another thing that we do in Green Thumb. We provide conflict resolution as well. We don't have a specific partnership with a senior program or Department of Aging, for example, but we direct them to specific resources. Many of these gardeners who care for these spaces, they need the extra support physically and that's where we fill the gap sometimes. So building rest beds, delivering materials, that's where we help them.
Okay, awesome. And then just sorry, one more question if I could. And do you look at, just going along the senior theme, have you looked at also partnering? Is there like room for public-private partnership meeting? There are some NORCs I have in my district that have a ton of green spaces, because they're in these garden apartment-style co-ops. And so let's just say, they came to you and said, "Hey, our board wants to use like a certain piece of our property to do this community garden through the NORC, which is, you know, funded through DIFTA." Is there a way to have a partnership there where they can utilize some of the support resources like you're talking about, but then do it on sort of like a private property, if you will? Like, that's shared by, you know, a cohort, I guess you could say?
Thank you for sharing that idea, Councilmember. Yes, we even support gardens that are in private property. Our support is basically providing the materials and technical assistance. We're not the property managers.
Right.
We will defer to them to manage the property, but we'll provide that assistance. We're not able to provide labor in those spaces, but we can provide free resources. So, and we are all the time being credit, working with other city agencies, state agencies, also with NYCHA, private property, even land trust sites. So we provide that type of support.
Okay, that's great. Because some of these co-op areas have like 3,000 units that expand over miles in my district, like on one board. And so they have lots of young families, kids. So I just feel like this would be a great opportunity to teach them about food, learning, growing, all of those things. So, okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm happy to follow up with your office.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Lee, for the good questions. Social workers' questions are always better than a lawyer's questions. You know, actually following up on Councilmember Lee's questions too. I couldn't quite get a clear answer to it. But so does the administration or does Parks have data on the number of sites on city-owned land that are engaged in urban agricultural practices?
Yes, we have all that data, Councilmember.
Okay. It would be good, you know, I think Councilmember Lee's question also about the mental health impacts for seniors and otherwise too. I think if there are ways for Green Thumb to quantify, you know, as best as possible, some of these things, like, and publicize more some of the things, like what are, you know, city-owned sites that have urban agriculture? What are neighborhoods that are both food deserts and lack community gardens or need more sites for urban agriculture? What are the mental health, you know, impacts? What do, you know, seniors, for example, or our youth report about, you know, how they feel being in community gardens? Or even, as I mentioned before, you know, I know there's one community garden in the South Bronx too that has served as a violence interrupter space for rival gangs as well and for conflict de-escalation. I just think these are such great ways to show how our community gardens are so useful. And it's not just about having a, you know, a green space, but it connects to all of these different other social impacts that we really care about, especially in communities that need it. I think it'd be great for Parks to have more data and clear ways to communicate it. Not a criticism by any means, but just more to say, I think that there is much more attention that can be called to community gardens and how important they are. And I think you all have some good data there to show that and make those connections. So it's something to definitely consider and maybe look forward to having some, you know, maps or other reports that even at the next hearing that we do on this, we could review as well.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that idea. We have some of those analyses, happy to share with you, but the other ideas, happy to work with that. Maybe in collaboration with the Mayor's Office of Urban Ag.
Yeah, in fact, the two agencies working together, I think could be a great collaboration there.
That's actually fully on the radar. We actually mentioned it in our first Urban Ag report that came out in October '23. And we're sort of starting to lay the groundwork for this, actually, data collection, trying to quantify things, you know, like that, mental health benefits and things like that. Easier said than done, but we're gonna try.
That's, that's great to hear. And if you can share that with the council too, that would be really helpful, because we can also help to publicize it. And, and, you know, Carlos, you had mentioned this before, but this is my last couple of questions where, how has the Mayor's Office of Urban Agriculture and Green Thumb engaged with other jurisdictions to learn about and adapt to best practices related to community gardens, the management of gardens, working with community groups on the ground or urban agriculture? What are you seeing from other jurisdictions across the country?
Yeah, so we have, actually, we have engaged with urban agriculture leaders in cities across the country and internationally. In the spirit of, you know, exchanging ideas, best practices, sharing innovations and brainstorming policy prescriptions. Executive Director Kiana Mickey has a regular meeting with an urban agriculture directors group, actually comprised of urban agriculture directors from around the country, which is great. She is also regarded as a national expert and is frequently requested to share best practices at urban agriculture and food systems events and conferences and symposiums and so forth. But, yeah, there are all kinds of ideas that are actually happening, you know, all across the country. We're trying to, and internationally as well, like, you know, different cities are doing different things. We're trying to benefit from that. Some of the land use agreements that we've seen are actually interesting. Not, not ready to quite share that yet, but happy to have a offline, you know, happy to have a deeper conversation again with, you know, with you about this, actually, with the director involved. But she's, she's been doing this pretty consistently since the start of the office, so we've been trying to, yeah.
Yeah, well, Kiana's a leader in this work and I've been fortunate to be able to learn from her. So definitely very excited to talk more. And how about on the community gardens side?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that. I'm proud to say that we're the largest and the strongest community gardening program in the nation. I would say, I can even dare to say around the world. Many people from other countries, from Japan, from Europe, from Latin America, come here to see our program. And they're always amazed about our system and our model and our philosophy. But we always learn from them and that exchange. So we're in constantly communication with them. We are also part of the American Community Gardening Association as well. And also sharing best practices and we're very proud to share that we are the largest and the strongest.
That's great to hear. And finally, how does Parks navigate for and support community gardens that are not on parks-owned property? So, for example, if they're in vacant HPD lots or, you know, other lots that have been abandoned or vacant in some way. Is that a part of the portfolio too? And how does, how does Parks support those community gardens as well?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Yes, we have 175 gardens in different jurisdictions and we provide the same level of support to them. Land trusts, privately-owned gardens, or city and state jurisdiction. The only difference is like, we don't provide the property management aspect. In our gardens, we are responsible for sidewalks, fences, retaining walls and all that nature, but same level of support.
Great, thank you. And we've also been joined by Councilmember Narcisse. Do you have any questions before we end this panel? We'll give you, we'll give you 30 seconds. I know. Ah, you are.
Yes, today's the street renaming, yep. Yes. Yes, I got it.
In a minute, we can, I can ask another-
No, I'll ask, because I have to run back again-
All right.
-for my health. Good morning and thank you, Chair, for the opportunity for me to ask that question.
Need more community gardens in City Hall, so we can all rest and relax too.
We don't have no time to rest. I have about three different things going at once. So I'm asking for the support for the street renaming, because Detective Joe Calibris lived in Marine Park, that's my constituency. Detective Calibris was a dedicated member of the NYPD and that's the reason I had to rush here to come and ask for the support. He's a beloved figure in our community. His service and the positive impact he made deserve to be remembered. So I'm naming, the co-naming the street is an honor to serve lasting tribute to his legacy and a reminder of the sacrifices made by those in law enforcement, which we need to keep up and making sure that their name never forgotten for the work they had done for our community. It will also highlight the importance of mental health care for all, especially our first responders who face immense pressure every day. So I'm asking not only the opportunities to name the street. I know some folks will always wonder what it could have been. But it is time for us to take mental health seriously, if any time. So I thank you, Chair, for giving me that opportunity. So I ask everybody to support, because it's important to keep his name high. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, for your moving words and look forward to voting on your bill and all the others right after this hearing is over too. So, thank you, Councilmember. You can, absolutely. All right, well, I want to thank this panel so much for your testimony, for answering the questions, and look forward to our continued work together to highlight the importance of community gardens. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, well, we will now move on to public testimony. Before doing so, I just need to read out a few reminders. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, which is about community gardens in our city as well as street namings. I would now have the honor to call up Anna Marie Vallone as well as Perry Vallone to give their testimony.
Hello, Chair, this is for the city street renaming?
Yes.
And I'm here for moral support.
Good morning.
Hi, Chair, how are you? Thank you, Chair Krishnan, and Councilmember. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak today. And thank you for considering the co-naming of 157th Street and 32nd Avenue, right by Bound Park, Paul A. Vallone Way. I'm just gonna take two minutes just to say a few words about my husband. Anyone that knew Paul knew he wanted to make our community the best place he could. He worked tirelessly and was devoted to advocate for better quality of life. He worked on scholarships for students, for the community. He was part of a tree giveaway to make our spaces more green. He instituted holiday parades. He brought back fireworks, celebrations and all family events. He mentored, inspired and built relationships. He served on boards and was a leader. And everything he did, everyone knows he did with his heart, his soul and his big smile. This street, 157th and 32nd Avenue by Bound Park, is so meaningful to our family. Outside of him spearheading a 10-year project for improvements to the park, it's several blocks from our home. We raised our children there. With many visits during the week, the kids ran around the pond, they played in the playground, they sat on the famous concrete turtle. And he even coached and had practices for his soccer team there. He loved, he loved the community, he loved community service, and he's lived his life to serve. This co-naming should be, this co-naming is an honor and would be an honor. In his eight years in council and two years of deputy commissioner, I want to thank you for recognizing his achievements, working with him and remembering him. My husband passed away almost five months ago. He did so much in his short time. He leaves behind a legacy and for that I am thankful. behind a legacy, and for that I am thankful and proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of my father and the whole Vallone family, thank you for the honor, committee.
Well, I just want to say, uh, first, it's an honor, uh, to be able to, uh, consider, um, uh, as our city council, a street naming for Paul Vallone. Our hearts, Anna Marie, of the entire city council, are with you, with the Vallone family. Uh, Paul has left an indelible mark on this city council, and now we will make sure that he does on the streets of Queens, um, in our city, too. Uh, he was always someone who encouraged me even in fighting for parks and green space, um, in our tree canopy, and I, I couldn't be more, uh, profoundly moved to be able to push this forward, uh, in Paul's honor, which will be a lasting testament to his work.
Thank you, Chair.
So thank you all so much, and all our love to you all, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now call up Eric Goldstein, Anna Sax, and Brandon Pachuka. Go ahead, Eric.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Goldstein, New York City Environment Director at the Natural Resources Defense Council, NRDC, a longtime supporter of parks and community gardens. We advocated, uh, for many years for the one percent for parks that you have been championing. We represented community groups in the nineteen nineties fight when Mayor Giuliani wanted to destroy so many of our community gardens. We appreciate your leadership in standing up for and fighting for parks, uh, in every city neighborhood and for all New Yorkers. Just about everybody who loves New York loves our community gardens. They're the green oases. They provide recreation, exercise, fresh air, fresh vegetables for hundreds of thousands of city residents, and they bring people and communities together. But our community gardens continue to face challenges. They need more support and resources, not funding cutbacks from the Department of Parks and from the Adams Administration. They need to know that their licensing agreements will be renewed and their future assured, and they need the funds to expand community gardens to all city neighborhoods, and in particular, to every NYCHA development. One other thing our community gardens need, if we're to continue to expand urban agriculture in the nation's largest city, they need healthy soil, soil that's nutrient-rich and without heavy metals, and that's where community and Parks Department composting should come in. Our city's organic trash, food scraps, yard waste, food soil, paper, can be processed into finished compost that can serve as natural fertilizer and soil enhancer, but the Parks Department is failing its responsibilities to advance this essential strategy. First, they're violating the city's recycling law that requires every city agency that generates a significant amount of yard waste to compost those materials. The department has for years ignored this statutory directive. Second, the department is evicting the Big Reuse Community Processing Operation from its small but spectacular Long Island City location under the Fifty-Ninth Street Big Bridge. Big Reuse is a well-run, efficient, nationally-recognized nonprofit community composting group that is, uh, converting waste into finished compost. It is the product of nutrient-rich soil amendment that goes back to the community, produces useful nutrient-rich soil amendment that goes back to the community and supports urban agriculture. It actually assists the Parks Department, as you know, uh, by accepting from Western Facilities parks, um, and taking their leaf and yard waste, saving the department from having to set up its own composting. NRDC and all of the other advocates here love our city's parks. We appreciate the good work of the Parks Department workers, but this move to evict Big Reuse as of June thirtieth is inexplicable, unwise, and unnecessary. It brings shame on Parks Department Commissioner Sue Donahue and her senior staff. Shame. And if that decision is not reversed, it will become a permanent blot, a stain that cannot be removed on the proud history of this department and its current leadership. We thank you for all you are doing and have done to preserve all of our community gardens and community composting and Big Reuse in particular.
Thanks for your testimony, Eric, and for highlighting the importance of Big Reuse's work, uh, and the importance of making sure that the Parks Department finds space for them and protects their operations. Thank you.
Thank you for having this hearing. I also wanted to talk about Big Reuse and community composting in general. So, community composting belongs in parks. It makes sense. Parks produces a huge amount of leaf and yard waste, and where does that go? Right now, for the most part, it goes to landfills and incinerators. Instead, it can be processed on-site and turned into compost that is then used to nourish the parks' own land. That's the type of climate, local solutions, that we should be aiming for as a city. Um, so on one level, this is undoing this proven climate solution, which is to create a parking lot, which according to AIA New York and the Center for Zero Waste Design is not necessary, that there's an existing parking lot that can be utilized. And then, on the other hand, there's this idea of democracy and what type of city we want to build. And I understand that it's the parks' land, and I also understand it's our land, and it's our city, and we get to decide how we use our land. And it seems like, um, it's undermining our local democracy, the way in which the Parks Department has been operating, and I love the Parks Department, and it's, um, and it pains me to see that there isn't this dialogue and there isn't this maturity to be able to have difficult conversations and come to the table and find solutions that work. There's broad support for Big Reuse from the Queensborough President, eighteen council members, one hundred and fifteen community organizations. There've been multiple parks' own community input meetings where universally people supported in NYCHA and otherwise, uh, Big Reuse staying there. Over three thousand letters were sent to the Adams Administration, and yet, nothing seems to be enough. And it's been, um, for me personally, disheartening to see that, like, I love our democracy, I love parks, I love the city, and I want to be able to get to a better solution, and it's been, um, sad to see that the Parks Department and its current leadership, or the Adams Administration, I'm not sure who it's coming from, is unwilling to engage with the local community. So thank you for this hearing, and I really am looking forward to solution the benefits of, because that's possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Krishnan, and members of this Committee on Parks and Recreation, for the opportunity to submit testimony. My name is Brandon Pachuka. I'm a resident of the Lower East Side, and I work in architecture and urban planning as an urban data scientist and full-stack engineer, focused on evaluating how our urban environment can become more sustainable. Community gardens such as Elizabeth Street Garden play a vital role in our urban environment. They provide communities with access to quality green space, daylight, help mitigate water runoff, lower urban heat island effect, and foster a sense of community. These aspects align with the committee's mission on parks and recreation, underline the importance of preserving such green infrastructure. I volunteer and garden at the Elizabeth Street Garden and approximately twenty thousand square foot community garden in Little Italy Community Board District Two. Elizabeth Street Garden provides hundreds of free programs on the community, such as poetry, concerts, movie nights, tai chi, yoga, and educational classes for the neighboring preschools, all offered at no cost to the city and free to the public. These events unite the community and provide a clean, safe space for the physical and mental health of all. When I lost my mother two years ago to a battle of cancer, grief and depression became my reality. When I found Elizabeth Street Garden, it brought me back to life. It offered a way for me to put my gardening skills to good use and gave me a sense of community when I needed it most. The city, specifically the Department of Housing Preservation Development, is currently seeking to destroy the garden and build a seven-story, approximately ninety-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one square foot mixed-use building containing a hundred and twenty-three units of affordable housing guaranteed for sixty years, four thousand square foot ground floor retail, and eleven thousand square foot office space, and a sixty-six hundred square foot publicly accessible green space. The proposed development, if implemented, would not only erase a precious green space from an, an area with an already significantly low access to quality green space, but also potentially disrupt the community's sense of belonging and the garden's positive impact on physical and mental health. This is not just a matter of losing a garden, but a threat to the very fabric of the community. Elizabeth Street Garden is awaiting a decision from the New York Court of Appeals, which will rule on whether the city met its obligation when it declared that there would be no negative impacts by removing a twenty thousand square foot community garden. This decision will have longstanding implications for environmental review at the city and state levels. The city framed this argument as green space versus affordable housing. This is a false choice between two profoundly essential pieces of the urban fabric. This is why Elizabeth Street Garden submitted a plan to the mayor's office and preserved, and, that preserves the garden and achieves its housing goals within the community district at underutilized sites. Over the past month, we have launched a letter writing campaign in our community and have sent over one hundred thousand letters to the mayor's office, HPD, and the administration. Instead of working with us to find a viable solution, the city insists on fighting in court and spending thousands in taxpayer dollars. I call upon this committee and the city of New York to formally recognize community gardens as essential cornerstones of communities that stitch together the urban fabric. Reject the notion that we can only have more housing or green space. Restore the two-point-six million funding for Green Thumb and support for our mission for one percent of the NYC fiscal park budget for departments, uh, parks and recreation. Embrace Elizabeth Street Garden and work with us to find a solution to meet our housing goals and preserve a one-of-a-kind garden. Come by the garden yourself with your friends, family, or loved ones to see how a community garden can give people a place to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you to this panel for your testimony. Next, we'll call up, uh, and sorry, I want to mention also, council member Julie Menon, um, is on virtually. Now, I'd like to call up Ayesha Maharis, Chrissy Ward, and Joseph Reiver.
Thank you.
Ayesha, may you start.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me well? I'll try.
Very nice to see you.
To use my out-of-voice. Um, thank you to Chairman Krishnan and members of the Committee on Parks and Rec for the opportunity to provide this testimony today. My name is Ayesha Maharis Ladjago, and I am the Director of Advocacy and Programs at Green Gorillas. Green Gorillas is a nonprofit organization that supports community gardeners and activates youth engaged in food justice across the city since nineteen seventy-three. As the organizer of the Green Gorillas Council of Gardeners, a dynamic coalition uniting community gardeners across New York City, I want to highlight several crucial recommendations for advancing a sustainable and equitable food system. Oh, it wasn't on. Oh, wow. Sustainable and equitable food system in our city. Recent ten percent New York City budget cuts, particularly to the Department of Parks and Recreation, have severely affected New York City Green Thumb. This is essential, this essential agency has seen a significant reduction in its budget, hindering its capacity to provide technical assistance, necessary supplies, and adequate staffing, thus impeding its ability to effectively support community gardeners. Therefore, if this budget cuts does get enacted, we call upon the city to invest in program areas that already exist in order to alleviate those burdens. So we recommend the city to increase funding to the Parks Equity Initiative and allocate three hundred thousand dollars, um, of those funds to create a pilot program empowering garden groups to access funds directly through a simplified application and reporting process that fosters equity and sustainability. We call on the city to continue to invest in a greener NYC to empower local organizations in providing youth with green jobs, infrastructure, and advocacy opportunities to community gardeners. We also call on the city to increase funding to Get Stuff Clean Initiative to enable Department of Health and Mental Hygiene RAC Academy to address rodent infestation and illegal dumping that's affecting community gardeners, while also strengthening collaboration between DSNY and Green Thumb and enhancing the relationship and outreach of Department of Health RAC Academy Training Program for community gardeners. We also encourage the city to restore funding of two-point-six million dollars to Green Thumb. We also support the Playfair Coalition in asking for the mayor to dedicate one percent of his New York City fiscal budget to the Department of Parks and Recreation. Community gardeners have been left to fend for themselves for decades. It is time for the city to invest in communities and uplift the benefits community gardens contribute to neighborhood success. These budgetary constraints facing New York City Parks Green Thumb Division underscore the urgent need for a platform to focus on protecting and hastening vital services and initiative integral to well-being of our city and its residents. Thank you so much and for considering our recommendation.
Good morning, Chair Krishnan and members of the committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Chrissy Ward, and I'm Director of Education at City Parks Foundation. Um, and today is my birthday, and...
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I almost considered when this hearing was shifted to, uh, not come today, but decided very quickly that that was a bad decision, because this is a very, very important issue. Uh, City Parks Foundation is an organization dedicated to enriching and sustaining our urban green spaces for the benefit of all New Yorkers. Today, I would like to highlight the significant impact of our Learning Gardens program and advocate for the continued support and expansion of community gardens across New York City. City Parks Foundation's Learning Gardens program operates in multiple neighborhoods across the city, primarily in Bronx, Queens, and Brooklyn, engaging youth, offering after-school and summer sessions that engage schoolchildren in hands-on community garden activities and STEM learning and primarily growing food. And these are children that are coming from, um, historically marginalized neighborhoods that really need these community green spaces. Uh, children learn the fundamentals of gardening, from planting seeds to harvesting crops to discovering the crucial role of pollinators such as bees and butterflies. We engage paid high school and college interns to assist to produce upwards of two thousand pounds of fruits and vegetables each year. We also introduce children to the diverse cultural and artistic uses of various plants, enriching their cultural awareness and creative expression. This is especially important in a city that is home to diverse immigrant communities and whose gardens reflect that makeup. But we know that the benefits of community gardens extend beyond, beyond the educational. They provide a vital resource for local communities by offering low-cost and free fresh produce. They help combat urban heat islands, improve air quality, and support local biodiversity. Until the administration's budget cuts this year, they provided critical composting services to communities, the environmental benefits of which are well documented, documented and spoken of today. City Parks Foundation works closely with New York City Green Thumb and many other community gardening groups, including Green Gorillas, and volunteers who manage an incredible network across the city. These organizations and thousands of community gardeners they support provide invaluable services to our green spaces. Reduced funding can result in fewer resources and staff, such as the community engagement coordinators who provide key community education and mediation in the most democratic spaces in our city. For the first time in many years, the Green Thumb Grow Together, an event that has brought thousands of gardeners together to learn from and activate with one another, was greatly reduced and nearly halted due to budget cuts. This event and many other programs and services are essential in sustaining the rich, social, and biodiverse environments of the city's nationally acclaimed community gardens. We call on the administration to restore and increase funding to community gardens. Additionally, we urge the council to increase funding to the Parks Equity Initiative, so more community gardeners can access the resources they need, and to expand the Work of Partnerships for Parks, a jointly operated program by City Parks Foundation and the Parks Department to continue to support these efforts. We call for increased funding to a greener NYC and for one percent of the city budget to be allocated to funding parks. This investment is essential for combating climate change and maintaining and expanding green spaces that are vital to our city's environmental health and community well-being. Thank you for your time.
Uh, my name is Joseph Reiver. I'm the Executive Director of Elizabeth Street Garden, and on behalf of Elizabeth Street Garden, I thank you and your committee members for holding this oversight hearing on the importance of New York City's community gardens. In seeking to better support community gardens, the council must prioritize protecting existing gardens that are at risk of being destroyed. Elizabeth Street Garden is a roughly twenty thousand square foot community sculpture garden cherished by many people from the surrounding neighborhood, as well as people from around the city and the world. Currently, over a hundred and fifty thousand people visit the garden annually. The volunteer-based nonprofit of the same name manages the space, offering hundreds of free public programs for the community throughout the year, including wellness... of free public programs for the community throughout the year, including wellness, live music, poetry, movies, screenings, and educational events from the local public schools like PS 130. The city specifically, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, is currently seeking to destroy the garden to build 123 units of senior affordable housing, affordable for 60 years, luxury ground-floor retail, and over 11,000 square feet of office space for one of the developer partners. In our efforts to preserve the garden, we are seeking a solution that saves the garden and achieves much-needed affordable housing at existing alternative sites within the community board and council districts. Such a solution could achieve more housing and more public open space in a neighborhood already underserved in terms of affordability and public open space. ESG's proposal to Mayor Adams can be read at elizabethstreetgarden.com-proposal. It's also attached to my testimony. ESG is awaiting a decision on a case before the New York Court of Appeals, the outcome of which will either uphold or severely weaken environmental law at a city and state level. While this work is deeply personal to me and many community members, preserving Elizabeth Street Garden reflects a citywide issue, issues including the lack of true public green space, environmental law, and the need to prioritize community gardens as vital infrastructure. It is common knowledge that community gardens help maintain air quality, collect stormwater runoff, benefit mental and socioeconomic health, and cool down our city, which is considered to be one of America's hottest heat islands due to urban development. Yet, the odds of city government creating any new community garden are slim to none. If the above knowledge were formally recognized by this council and the city, the city would reject any false choice of housing versus green space and embrace gardens like Elizabeth Street Garden, along with a solution that achieves up to five times the amount of housing at alternative underutilized sites. Instead, the city is currently spending thousands of taxpayer dollars to fight the community in court and perpetuate misleading narratives about the garden. The political case surrounding Elizabeth Street Garden is a prime example of the failure of the city government to achieve viable solutions that address climate change, our public spaces, and the housing crisis without any loss to the people of New York. The case of Elizabeth Street Garden itself is a prime example of how the people of this city can maintain and govern vital public space iconic to New York at zero-dollar cost to the city. I call upon this committee and the City of New York to formally recognize community gardens as essential cornerstones of communities that stitch together the urban fabric. Reject the false choice of green space versus housing, and restore the 2.6 million in funding for Green Thumb and support the mission of at least, at the very least, 1% of the New York fiscal budget to the New York Department of Parks and Recreation. A copy of my, our proposal, Elizabeth Street Garden's proposal to Mayor Eric Adams is attached to this testimony, and it includes a report to save the garden as a cultural, as a conservative land trust at zero-dollar cost. I encourage this committee to take a look at it because it shows how community gardens can actually become self-sustainable and financially self-sustainable and independent from city budget while also having support from the city, obviously. That report has a lot of financial information and shows how Elizabeth Street Garden has achieved this under duress from trying to be destroyed by the city. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony and for including those materials, too. Next, we'll call up Claire Mifflin, Sharice Palomino, and Justin Green. You may start.
Okay. Thanks. I'm Claire Mifflin from the Center for Zero Waste Design. I agree with everything you said about the need to support community gardens, which are also being hit by the defunding of community compost. New York City's own 2021 Food Forward Plan has an initiative to bolster community-owned waste management initiatives, stating that the city will identify and address barriers to community composting, not defund it. There's also city law that parks' yard waste must be separated in composting, but very little is. Until recently, it was, from Western Queens, where parks' yard waste and food scraps went to big reuse were made into compost for gardens, parks, and street trees. Big reuse needs to stay. I'm an architect. I've done construction administration for parks. Bushwood Inlet Park in Williamsburg, I did. I know parks can accommodate construction staging on their neighboring lot, or on the site, or on a sliver of Big Reuse's site. There, there's no choice here. The new park can be built, Big Reuse can stay, parks' vehicles can be parked, there's enough space. And the city needs to scale this model up citywide, as this is nutritious compost, free of plastics. And if New York City wants healthy soils in its parks and street trees, it needs about 50 times as much. We've calculated how much would be needed to make the soil citywide green spaces healthy. And they need to be healthy. I don't know if you've been upstate in Harriman or Minnewaska State Park recently, but the trees have no leaves. There's been an outbreak of spongy moth caterpillars, which has decimated and eaten all the leaves. If the trees are healthy, if they get enough moisture later in the year, they could grow new leaves and survive. This could happen in the city. We need our street trees to be healthy, and compost can store six times its weight in stormwater, keeping that water there, keeping the trees healthy. It's also a fundamental question of how we, what kind of city do we want New York City to be? Do we want to support community gardens and composters, which can provide so many volunteers to support street trees and parks and bring thousands of inspirational green jobs to maintain green infrastructure? Do we want to educate and engage and inspire New Yorkers to separate their food scraps and put them to good use? Do we want a green, vital, and resilient city that uplifts community initiatives? Or do we want a city where nobody knows where their food comes from, where their food scraps go to, where we rely on centralized green infrastructure and just give out fines if New Yorkers do the wrong thing? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Justin?
Hi, Chair. Thanks so much for having this hearing and your support for our community composting site and for community composting in general. I really appreciate the council's support for our efforts and frankly, super frustrated with parks in the city for not listening to elected officials, as other supporters have noted. It was supported by the community input meetings that parks had. Two community input meetings came back unanimous in the design for the new Queens Bridge Baby Park, that we should remain. And, and literally unanimous, like every breakout group came back in support of us remaining. Parks is ignoring that community input meetings that they organized. In addition to both community boards, Community Board One, Community Board Two, all elected officials, 3,000 letters, all asking for us to remain onsite. The city invested over half a million dollars in building out our community composting site. It is looked at as a leader and a model for the nation. I mean, it's great that the city and Green Thumb have become models for community gardening, but there is a real opportunity, and we have been a model and a leader in the city and the nation for community composting. We started in community gardens to address the soil in those community gardens. Like, we came out of community gardens, not community composting, came out of the effort to improve soils in Two Coves and Queens, Broken Grange. We, that's where we started our efforts, and we started to help grow food for the city, for residents, with the waste we were generating and burdening other communities with. So, community composting, our site, are a real integral part of urban agriculture. And we've helped both East New York Farms, we've helped dozens of community gardens with their composting sites by providing compost, assisting them with setting up composting setups and providing browns and picking up food scraps. So, assisting in their composting efforts, which are all based out of that composting site. If we lose that, community gardens will lose a huge support for their composting efforts, which is, as we know, New York City soils need compost. They need that amendment, and they will lose that when we lose our site, especially Western Queens, which has been so dependent and so real supportive of us being here. So, we ask again, I know you've been working with parks, but it brings up, and just for one more second, I think it brings up an issue about parks and their lack of, of taking public input seriously and taking elected officials seriously. And it brings up a process question there for me about how decisions should be made on our space, our community spaces, and how we can actually have real input on how those spaces are used. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony and for Big Reuse's work, and we will continue to push as a council, as we've been doing
Thank you.
in support of you all, too, and appreciate the work that you do.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Sharice?
Good afternoon. My name is Sharice Palomino, and I'm the Director of Advocacy and Programs in New Yorkers for Parks. We are a founding member of the Playfair for Parks Coalition, which includes over 400 organizations from across the city. Thank you, Chair Krishnan, for this timely hearing. I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the significance of community gardens and urban agriculture in New York City. We are navigating the challenges posed by Mayor Adams' executive budget that reduces New York City Parks budget by $55 million, putting these vital spaces at risk. Community gardens and urban agriculture initiatives serve as vital spaces for community engagement, social interaction, and education. Community gardens contribute to the urban ecosystem in numerous ways. They enhance biodiversity by providing habitats for various pollinators, birds, and beneficial insects. These gardens help in reducing urban heat islands, mitigating air pollution, and managing stormwater runoff through natural absorption. By transforming vacant lots into vibrant green spaces, community gardens contribute to the beautification and ecological balance of our city. There is an urgent need to reverse the hiring freeze and increase staffing. Mayor Adams' budget reduces the agency's ability to deliver core services that are critical to equitable access to these vital spaces. I urge the City Council to consider the executive budget's reductions, the reduction of the executive budget's impact, not just on staffing, but the maintenance of community gardens in our larger park system, along with the impacts on environmental sustainability. The crises of the last few years have shown us that we are overdue for a transformative investment in our park system. By investing in our park system and restoring the $55 million in cuts and pushing us, pushing to set us on a path to 1% of the city budget for parks, we can ensure a safer, healthier, and more vibrant city for generations to come. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thanks to you all for your testimony. Now, we'll call up Annalisa Zausner-Mannes and Sharon Brown. You may start.
My name is Annalisa Zausner-Mannes. I co-founded Nater B.K. when the city shut down compost collections during COVID, so District 40, shout out Councilmember Rita Joseph. First, I guess, as a community organizer, I want to thank you, Councilmember Krishnan, for what you said about advocating for smaller community groups to have more access, distinguishing resources, and licensing agreements, because that is a huge item that scares and weans people away from coming together. I'm the daughter of immigrants and definitely language barriers. There are a lot of different reasons that people are blocked, so I appreciate that. I also want to take a moment and celebrate the people who are stewarding this land. Many people work in community spaces for free. They're doing this work, you know, in community, and there is no reward except taking care and stewarding the land. When we talk about parks and when we talk about trees and vegetation, we can't do so without thinking about the cycle of life and thinking about what that means for our urban landscape and the health of our soil. When Mr. Burr spoke about naturally grown foods, specifically community gardens and urban farms, he did not speak about the growing amount of plastics that we're finding in our food. And so much so, I think Harvard's, a few years back, released the study that it's in our bodies, right? Babies are now being born with microplastics. This is a way that PFAs and waste is finding its way into our soil. This is especially poignant when we're talking about equity and access, which you also spoke to, in terms of the neighborhoods and keeping this land as clean as possible, truly clean. So, I'm here advocating for community composting, not only to stay for Big Reuse, to obviously stay in their space, as a huge steward of that land, collecting compost from all over, multiple boroughs, and also collecting overages. I'm not sure if we're familiar with the fact that a lot of community gardens don't have space to process everything themselves, and Big Reuse would go around to these community gardens and pick up the things that they could not process themselves, which is kind of amazing, and bring it here, which kept it circular. I'm gonna just condense it and say, I believe I was told the statistic that the most expensive part of waste is the transportation. And I think that's really, for me, what's most, and Claire spoke about it, Eric, I feel like everyone has spoken to this idea of a circular system and what it means for our city to have access in a central location. So, I'm inviting parks to seriously consider not only allowing Big Reuse to continue composting under the Queens Bridge, but to expand access points across the city so that nonprofits like Big Reuse that pick up overages are able to keep the process local, partnered with parks, because it just very simply makes sense. So, I'm, I'm here for logic, really. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and all that you had said in your work. We had Sharon Brown. No? Okay. We'll move to virtual now. We have several witnesses on, on virtual. We have Chrissy Remain.
You may begin.
Chrissy, are you there? Okay, we'll move on to Elizabeth Apurum.
Good morning, everybody. Just give me one second. I just need to get into the background.
Sure.
Yeah, so, good morning, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Apurum, and I am the Board Secretary of The Garden by the Bay. The Garden by the Bay is a 15,000-square-foot urban garden that has been created in response to us being in a food desert. I just wanted to quickly talk about some of the importance of having equitable access to nature spaces for better mental health outcomes, holistic nervous system regulation, and improved soul wellness. Soul wellness refers to a lifestyle where a person decides to place joy at the center of their lives through the adaptation of practices, habits, and mindset shifts in order to live more fulfilling and healthy and robust lives. Having access to equitable green and blue spaces impacts soul wellness, and having that access means having access to holistic resources to increase self-awareness, change mental health outcomes, and to deepen the connection with nature, which exponentially increases the level of care for the land that we live on. This access also directly influences the way we, the way in which we deal with trauma, how we have avenues for self-expression, and how one may handle the dualities of life, along with how we can use nature to heal ourselves and regulate our nervous system so we can make well-informed, level-headed, calm, and fluid decisions on a consistent basis. At The Garden by the Bay, we actually grow certain herbs such as mint and rosemary, whose essence brings feelings of happiness and helps relieve mental health, I'm sorry, mental and emotional stress. These plants can be used in meditation practices to spark reflection, build peace and comfort of self, which is crucial to building upon the relationship with nature. Essentially, having outlets for ways to positively transmit the various negative implications of the social, economic, emotional, and environmental well-being of generationally overlooked and marginalized people is more than necessary for urban areas, especially when there is more concrete than there are trees or accessible bodies of water. We have seen throughout history how neglected aspects of life dimensions affect quality of life. Recently, I found one of my friends was murdered by her children's father, which caused grief and all other aspects associated with that to arise to the surface. I know I needed to allow myself to go through the process and to, to go through the stages of grief so I could honor my friend and still be a functioning member of society. I headed to the water, but when I got there, the entrance at Beach 47th of the boardwalk, I was met with a locked gate with signage referring to protecting the birds. It wasn't like that a few weeks ago, but essentially, this entrance was recently locked, and not being able to sit and enjoy the healing benefits of the saltwater only furthered my sadness, but I remembered that I could go to The Garden by the Bay and be provided with the respite that I needed and more, which is exactly what I did. So, being able to have that access to a safe, a sacred space like the garden allowed me to not only transmit my grief, my pain, and my anger in real time transmit my grief, my pain, and my anger in real time. It helped me to regulate my nervous system and continue to process my trauma in a healthy and effective way. So we're just asking just to please help to keep sacred spaces like The Garden by the Bay thriving, so that our community can have healthy options to maneuver through much of the inevitable aspects of life. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Now, we have Francine Nolan Rogers.
Your time has started.
I'm here.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Good afternoon. Thank you to Chairman Krishnan and the members of the Committee of Parks and Recreation for the opportunity to submit this testimony. My name is Francine Rogers, and I am a member of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee Community Garden located in the Bronx. We are part of the Land Trust, Bronx Land Trust. Our garden, the Neighborhood Advisory Committee Garden, started in 1983 and has a rich 41-year history of community involvement and has been a vital green space in our South Bronx neighborhood. One of the reasons our garden has been able to survive over these past 40 years of highs and lows is the constant support and guidance from Green Thumb staff, along with the much-needed resources that they provided, such as trees, plants, lumber, tools, garbage bags, to name just a few items. I want to highlight our, I'm very disturbed by the recent 10% NYC budget cuts, particularly to the Department of Parks and Recreation, that have severely affected the NYC Green Thumb. This essential agency has seen a significant reduction in its budget, hindering its capacity to provide technical assistance, necessary supplies, adequate staffing, and thus impeding the ability to effectively support much-needed community gardens. Therefore, I join in the call for the city to invest in restoring $2.6 million to reef, for refunding the Green Thumb. Here are some facts in my mind about community gardens. Before, during, and after COVID-19, the COVID-19 crisis, green space continues to be a refuge for exercise, fresh air, and mental health. Gardens create peace and harmony in our city. How many violent crimes have happened in gardens? How many deaths were caused by community gardens? How many muggings? How many heroin and fentanyl sales were conducted in gardens? The answer: zero. How many pounds of free surplus food have been made available in food desert communities? How many free family picnics and barbecues have occurred in gardens? How many birthday parties, graduations, and anniversaries have been celebrated in gardens? How many science lessons and art projects have happened in gardens? How many diverse cultural celebrations have been sponsored by gardens? Answer: a vast amount, more than can be counted. So why doesn't the city council want to give more funding rather than cutting the successful neighborhood model of peace and safety? Every civilized society recognizes the need and value of publicly accessible green space. Gardens are self-managed, self-policed, and don't tax any city services. Continue the support and increase funding for the Green Thumb program and community gardens that are based on sweat equity, build volunteerism, and develop youth leadership and empowerment. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Ms. Rogers. And now, we have Corey Hassan.
You may begin.
Thank you, council member. I'm going to be delivering testimony on behalf of our Executive Director Lynn Bodnar Kelly. Good afternoon. My name is Lynn Bodnar Kelly, and I'm the Executive Director of the New York Restoration Project. Thank you, Chair Krishnan, for convening this hearing on urban agriculture, a topic which is very near and dear to our organization. NYRP's Urban Agriculture Program was founded in response to the pandemic in 2021. NYRP transitioned many of our gardens into urban agricultural oases for the surrounding neighborhoods. NYRP's Urban Agriculture Program has since doubled its capacity to offer 165 workshops, skill shares, and technical consultations in 2023 alone. The team's two full-time and two seasonal staff served NYRP's 52 portfolio gardens citywide and our Gardens for the City partners. NYRP's implementation of the Urban Agriculture Program during the COVID-19 pandemic was a decision to utilize our spaces to address the growing program of food insecurity in low-income communities. The program provides urban growers with agricultural education and materials, successfully feed themselves, their families, and neighbors. As average temperatures rise during the growing season, and these growing seasons get longer, there are many opportunities to grow new crops that were not possible to grow in the region just 10 years ago. NYRP's Urban Agriculture Team helps growers experiment with new topical crops regularly, including ginger and turmeric, which is what we work with the most. According to the Food Bank of New York City, NYC residents make up half of all food insecure people living in New York State, and the city's food insecurity rate is 12% higher than the national rate. Access to fresh and healthy food is more important now than ever, and we need to ensure that gardeners have the tools and support they need to continue to feed themselves in the most vulnerable communities. In food deserts, where access to fresh and affordable food is scarce, community gardens serve as a lifeline to New Yorkers. New York City must recognize the importance of this work as they consider the upcoming budget by supporting and funding these programs to expand urban agriculture. As New York City continues to navigate from uncertain times, community gardens and urban agriculture will be critical in ensuring communities are safer, healthier, and happier. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony, and we'll try one more time with Chrissy Romaine.
Hi, yes, sorry, computer restarted there. Thank you so much. I'm Chrissy Romaine. I'm Riverkeeper's Policy and Planning Manager. We thank the Committee on Parks and Recreation for your stewardship of New York City's community gardens and urban agriculture, and for offering us the opportunity to testify today. Riverkeeper is a nearly 60-year-old nonprofit member-supported organization devoted to the protection and restoration of the Hudson River from source to sea, and safeguarding of drinking water supplies through advocacy rooted in community partnerships, science, and law. As part of our mission, we sample water quality throughout New York City, advocate for climate-adaptive stormwater management, and whenever possible, work with our partners and city agencies to develop solutions oriented towards stormwater management policy. To that end, Riverkeeper developed critical green infrastructure recommendations in our 2022 report, Building an Equitably Green New York City. We encourage the city or the council to review the recommendations set forth therein for opportunities for improved green infrastructure. Among many other important benefits, community gardens act as critical green infrastructure and open space across the city, both passively managing stormwater and intentionally collecting and managing stormwater through cisterns and rain barrels. We support community gardens for their contribution, for reducing stormwater runoff, and more. We support community gardens as a space and place to connect communities to green space, as centers that foster community cohesion, improve air quality, and mitigate the urban heat island impact. New York City community gardens have a long history of grassroots development, and their founders are also some of the city's primary green infrastructure advocates. Though our priorities for green infrastructure usually center on stormwater management and water quality, in order for the city to adequately adapt and respond to climate change impacts, we need all hands on deck and collaboration across sectors. And I cannot stress this enough, community gardens are a truly unique space where sort of all of the buzzwords that we use around climate change really converge. There's space for community cohesion, there's space for green infrastructure, there's space where words like, I don't know, words like climate change, not vulnerability, but climate change adaptation, really, really can come to fruition. So Riverkeeper supports the city's community gardens and encourages the city council to extend to them the support they need to continue to provide the multiple benefits they offer local residents and the city's overall environmental health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And one more call for Sharon Brown. Live testimony.
How are you?
Good.
I just have to preface it by saying, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go for Israel. Just remember Israel in everything you're doing. Okay. The gardens need to be funded. They need to continue to be funded. They help the air quality, and it should be in cooperation with feeding those who are underserved, food deserts, and things like that. They need to have a program where they provide seeds, not only food for people, but seeds for people to plant their own gardens. So when they say there's a food desert and they give people food, that's very nice. You give someone a fish they can eat for a day, you give them a fishing rod and all the tackle and everything, and you teach them how to fish, and they can do it for themselves. So we also can teach people how to plant and do things at their own homes. Maybe there can be some kind of program where they go to their homes and start gardens in the community, as well as the community gardens. It's very important for it to help the air quality. So trees are very important. In these gardens, we shouldn't only have things that are to the ground. So we should have some things that grow up like trees. And it won't be in a way, it could probably be in the four corners or something like that. And we could have fruit-bearing trees and different things that grow on trees. That can also be something that provides food, seeds, and different things like that. And the greenery from the trees will help the air quality. So usually, most gardens have fruit. They can have flowers, they can have fruit, and the trees would help with the pollution a whole lot, with the oxygen levels and things like that. It would help out what they call climate change and stuff like that. The trees would be very helpful in strategic places, and all the greenery would help the air. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Ms. Brown. That concludes our hearing for today. I want to thank you all so much, both from the Parks Department for your work to care for our community gardens and support them, and of course, the gardeners out there who are doing this work every single day. We appreciate you, and we in the council are proud to continue supporting you all. Thank you all so much. And thank you to our committee counsel, Chris Sartori, Patrick Mulvihill, my team, Greg Clark, Chuck Park, and all our council staff here today, too, for a great hearing. Thank you all.